We're supposed to be in one of the other. We're supposed to get it by county and county. Chief asked me what happened with the farm building. It wasn't on the agenda. I missed my little note in the corner of my notes. So, when I went back, I got that. So, that needs to be added to the minutes for August the 3rd.
I'm gonna have to hurry to present this to the council on August 20th.
I know. And it wasn't on their agenda either, so there you go.
Okay. Okay.
But it probably will be on October 15th. Okay?
August 3rd? August 3rd is the first for the amendment. Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have approved the minutes for the September 8th meeting. We had an opportunity to look it over. That's me. Okay, now I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We don't have that many lectures. We got through one time. We have payroll claims for September 5th in the amount of $213,380.40. Okay, I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Today is September 21st. We have early claims here in the amount of $17,170.99. By the way, if anybody has a question about any of these, all our opportunity to try to work it out.
I will let it be approved. The early claims now $17,170.99.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have another early claim getting out $179.63 for NIPSCO. Now, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And our final one is a bill for Carroll County True Value for $34.86.
I just got lost a check in here.
It's what?
There's one that was lost and somebody lost their check.
Oh, and write another check. Seconds? All in favor, aye. And we have got to pass that. So, our first order of business here is John. I don't know how to pronounce that.
I'm speaking.
Mania?
Mania. Yeah. L.B.A.
Okay. That's a way. And Pam Garrison.
Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of Pam also.
All right. Boy, she's gonna work. If you'd like to speak without your math, that's fine.
Oh, great. Hey, thank you for letting me take the blow off. Anyway, hey, we were wondering what is the procedure for getting a, for building a CAFO in the county of, Carroll County? What is, what is the process on getting a CAFO to be built and to operate?
Well, there are certain guidelines that you must follow according to the area plan. And he's not right here today. You have certain setbacks that it must have. It must be in an agricultural area.
I.D.M. has restrictions also.
Yeah, I.D.M. has restrictions on it. BURM?
I was gonna ask if you wanted me to address that.
Barbick?
I was going to ask you if you would like me to address that.
I would.
Okay, is there, if I do it from here or does I have to get out of everybody else's way? Yes, like Bill said, that you do need to, there is, in Carroll County, there's a pre-application permit. So, when you're ready to start that process, you need to go to the area plan office and get a pre-application permit. And that does require that you notify neighbors within a certain distance. And I'm sorry, I don't remember what that distance is.
So, do I go through the area planner for that?
Yes. Yes. And this is for livestock facilities over a certain size. If you're very small, you know, like 4-H size or a few numbers, then it's, it's a much less regulated path. The agriculture industry strongly, strongly, strongly recommends that you use an engineering service to create the barn, to, to do an architectural for the barn, the specifications, the, every bit of that. And usually your banker would try to do, make you do that. And if you're a contractor or your contractor would require you to do that as well. Once you have the engineering done, then you apply to I.D.M. for the permit. Your engineering firm usually prepares the entire permit application process for you. And since it's I.D.M., I.D.M. approves it. Now, there's also another notification process during that period of time that also notifies the neighbors within a, it's a different radius, but it is also a notification to neighbors. Neighbors have an opportunity, once a permit is approved, neighbors have a comment period which...
It's a draft permit, correct?
Sorry?
It's a draft permit from I.D.M., correct?
No, it's the real permit. It's just that you have an opportunity to comment on it.
Congress for just commenting on it.
You, you can, you can object, you can file paperwork, you can, if you need to, if you want to appeal it, then there's a procedure through I.D.M. to appeal the farmer's application for a permit. If nothing happens in that period of time, then the permit is considered to be final. Then you go back to the area plan office and get your billing permit. Sorry, you probably also need to get, say, a driveway permit, septic permit, if it applies. Not all, that doesn't always apply. Drainage, it's called a Rule 5. There's some water conservation district that's a Rule 5 permit to make sure that your drainage is appropriate and that you're not affecting county drains, that your runoff is appropriate. You might also have to go to the drainage board and talk to them. So, there's a lot of permits. And then the final thing that you do is get your billing permit to actually start construction.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I think we gotta do some homework, huh?
Yes. Are you, if you're interested in building, I could refer you to some engineers.
All right, just stop.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. I knew she could give you a more precise rundown than I could.
It's, sir, about Pam and I, it's like, like during this process, is there ever like a, like an environmental impact study done prior to the approval of these?
Not in the way that you're thinking about it. The engineers do that. They do soil borings, they do site evaluation. They have to take into consideration the drainage, where there may be drainage tiles that are private tiles, where there may be county tiles, where there may be open ditches. There are requirements that you're so far away from the house, so far away from wells, so far away from running open water, so far away from underwater, underground water. So, there is, there is, but when you say environmental impact, that's usually an industrial application, which is a much bigger analysis. There is that, there is still the analysis that they have to go through to comply with I.D.M. as well as ID, Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a specific permit or process or limitation on waste? Obviously, a concentrated animal feed operation is gonna have a concentrated amount of animal waste. And what are the, what are the allowable limits or regulation, if you have any regulations on that or?
That's...
And then how, how does the county actually know, when you go ahead and approve something like this, that it's actually not impacting the fellow citizens of the county?
Well, that's, I don't know about the county, but the state has another, again, the D, I.D.M. and DNR also have a hand in, in that. Now, there's, that's a whole different set of regulations. There's a certain amount of regulations that, that you have to have a certain amount of storage in the building when it's constructed. But then there's a completely different set of regulations that govern the disposal of the manure and once it leaves the facility. So, that's a whole completely different regulation.
So, this is part of the, so the consideration of the animal waste, that's gonna fall under I.D.M. and DNR with the permit?
Well, okay, that's a different permitting process. So, the, the disposal of the waste is, is also governed by the state chemist. And you have to get...
State chemist.
Mm-hmm. And in order to dispose of ethylene, so for example, for our farm, and we, we don't have animals, but we take as much manure as we can get from our neighbors. We have to have a commercial applicator's license to do that. And that's training. We have to get training every year and we have to be licensed in, in order to do that. You can't just take manure from a building and do whatever you want with it. It has to be disposed of in a specific manner. You have to be trained on how to do that. And you have to, there are only certain conditions when you can do that. So, it's also regulated. And that's all, that's DNR and then state chemist.
After asking you about getting the permits and then, then I asked you about the waste, now I'm just wondering what else is there? If I could just come up with a correct question of what else needs? It looks like this really branches out to a lot of approvals. And is there anything I'm missing on this about a CAFO coming in?
Well, for the long term, you, whoever handles the manure has to keep track of every acre on which it's applied, every gallon and where it comes from. You have to keep really detailed records and that is subject to review by I.D.M. and state chemists. That's part of your license.
So, how often does I.D.M. and DNR, you guys got like, can you guys actually ask like DNR and I.D.M. to come on out and maybe do, you know, an audit and see?
Let's see, let me, let me think about this. Barns are audited at least every five years. And some of them are audited more frequently than that because it got a, a timeline and then there's randoms. And then any citizen can call, I believe it's I.D.M. There's a number for I.D.M. that you can call. And they, any citizen can call and either file a complaint or ask a question. If it involves a specific barn, then I.D.M. does come out and follow up with those. And then there's, there are written reports that are public information once those investigations are concluded.
What's your name and what do you do here?
My name is Mary Robinson and I am an ag attorney. So, I represent a number of clients who are livestock operators as well as, I'm also a farmer. And we use manure in our, in our farming operation as fertilizer.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very quick, Mary. Anyway, I guess, I guess if they're real mean of this, then unfortunately, a CAFO, two barns, have been erected between my operations. And this year, like, as you can see how I'm dressed, I got a shirt that, you know, Salem. I got my shorts on that has Indiana Dirt on it because I'm a gardener. I have a sun tan. I don't get that sun tan because I sit inside a building all day or like, enjoy conditioned air. I like to be outside. So does my girlfriend, Pam Harrison. And unfortunately, when the wind blows from the southwest, southwest, I'll read it. From southwest, we get, we get engulfed with a very strong odor of pig odor and urine and whatever else. Those anaerobic and aerobic bacteria are respirating out. And the address, as far as I can tell by the address, it's, where I go, I don't have a, oh, you have 500 north, approximately 500 north, 200 west. And what's going on is I talk to my neighbors and they smell it too. Very unfortunately, my neighbor that is closer in line to this CAFO, they are really being impacted where they can't enjoy being outside. And they even said that it, it engulfs their body when they go in the house. You're wearin'. And he told me this comment that when they, he knows who built, he knows who the constructors were. Now, this is, this is what's really amazing here. You know, you got, you gotta go through all this wonderful permits and everything. But Barry just said, oh yeah, you gotta get all these permits. Engineer has to do all this, make sure it's gonna be fine and everything. Well, my neighbor actually knows who constructed that, those CAFO barns. And they told him that you're not gonna smell any. Well, he knew better. He knew he was gonna still smell it. But, but that's what the builders told him. And that is what is being sold to our elected officials that, and your officers that are approving these permits. Something is wrong. And I've talked to other people, people that were their kids or themselves actually worked in a CAFO. And they say that there must be something wrong with either feed or the management of those, that CAFO because it should not be smelling that bad. So, it's almost like Pam Harrison has lived in the area for 56 years. And with this impact, this year, she cannot, she cannot actually enjoy her free liberty. That's her free liberty of enjoying her property outside that is supposed to be guaranteed by the constitution of the state of Indiana. And I've been there since 2012 and I can't either. And it's like, I really, we ask something to be done, like a mention to this facility, hopefully approved. We know, we understand people need to have, make money or ha- have a, have a livelihood. And I know it's an agricultural community. We understand that, Pam and I both. But please go by what the science standards are. And I'm from an aviation background. And what happens when you go ahead and like become an operator of a, of an airline or whatever, you gotta present the whole paperwork package on how you are gonna approve, how, how you are gonna operate. And it has to be sold to the FAA. And you, you can put anything on there. You can add things, you can do this, you can do that. But you have to meet certain minimum requirements. And when, when the FAA goes ahead and stamps that as approved, you gotta do it. And let's say, wow, you know what? Later on, you decide, oh, I don't have to do this, you know? I know it's in the document, but I'm not gonna do it because other airlines aren't doing it. And the FAA shows up, it's what they're gonna find you. Because you know what? You said you were gonna do this and this and this and you are not doing it. And the other thing is, I just wonder, I, I've talked to other people in Carroll County where they are happy with CAFOs coming up. And because of the same irritations of what they exhaust up. So, what is the procedure on trying to get standards approved?
I, I wanna answer that too, but go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that what the agriculture community encourages is that you let us know. So, this is a first time hearing of this. But the agriculture community does have a way where we work with farmers to make sure that they help be responsive to landowners. So, planting trees around it, doing some additional kinds of buffering or burming and, and working with you to help, help with that. And we've done some other remediation efforts with other livestock operations in the county. So, I'm on the Ag Association Board as their attorney. You know, I can get this information to them and they can talk to, I wrote down the address. We can find out who owns that. We can talk to the landowner or the farm owner and say, hey, let's, let's work with you and try to get some things put together so that it's not affecting the neighbors. And if it's a new barn, that they probably just didn't know what the impact is going to be or just need some time to, to get some things put in place. So, I'd like to take your contact information if you wouldn't mind. And I, or I can give you my card and we can go from there and the Ag Association can respond to your concerns.
Great. Now, from the county standpoint, you know, we don't have chemists. We don't have all these things to do, the testing that the state does. We do have our area plan, which sets the limits as far as how far away these buildings must be from other housing and things of that type. This has repeatedly come back up every, not every time a new building's built, but very frequently when a new building is being built, the people who are being impacted by it come in and say, what? Why is this happening? What, what, you know? But what, what happens is you're impacted by this one. So, you're fired up about doing something about this one. And as soon as that's done, nobody hears from you again. The next person comes in, they're fighting it all by themselves. The next one comes in, they're fighting it all by themselves. There's no county-wide unity in, in this voice about CAFOs. Now, several times it's been brought up to the area plan. And let me tell you how the area plan works as far as I see it. It is a completely separate board. We don't exercise control over the area plan. Other than we have an appointment one to each board, that is, area plan and the board is doing the field. They make their own rules. And they, they are set up by the state to be an independent agency, not controlled by the commissioners, which I have always been opposed to, but it's state law. I feel like that the area plan should actually work for the mayor, for the commissioners, for the elected official, but they don't. And it's such a segregated board that no, I mean, if we, if we appointed the majority of the members to that board, then we'd have some control, but we don't. The mayor doesn't appoint, you know, a majority of the members. The floor of town council doesn't appoint a majority of the people. So, because it's all separated, nobody has control over this board, no one by. Yeah?
Sir, who, who gets on, how, how do you get onto this area plan board?
Well, when, when a vacancy comes up, and we have one right now, a vacancy on it for our one spot, we'll be making an appointment onto that.
An appointment?
We will appoint somebody to that board.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I know I can make a comment. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to interrupt.
No, go ahead. That's fine.
Anyway, with that, that is like so contradictory about actually paying attention to we the people. Because we appoint people instead of allowing, like, what I learned over there in Cass County is this, with that WSP, this state relies, gives full authority to the elected officials to do the final decisions on this. In the state of Ohio, they give the, they have the elected officials, but they have to bring it to the people for the final decision. It'd be really excellent if this state would have a political reform happen to actually bring back the final decisions and powers to the people, to we the people. Because with this appointment, I mean, like, and with people complaining or being impacted negatively, it's like, wow, how, how can I get that board member off the area plan?
How could you get one off?
Yeah.
We could remove one.
You can't. How do, uh...
Well, we can remove our appointment, but we can't remove the mayor's or the board's appointment or...
But you guys don't appoint that.
You know, Maryam, tell me.
No, once they're appointed, they're appointed. They have a term limit. They're, they're appointed for four years. And the appointment you have in front of you today is a one-year, one-year revolving appointment. So, it's only appointed for one year at a time. But once they're appointed, they're appointed. And that's part of the process. And if I may respectfully disagree with, with you regarding your pressure point on your control of that board, the area plan commission does need to be independent and they do need to follow the rules that are in front of them. They represent the people that appoint them, but the body itself does need to be independent and not subject to a particular political agenda. They need to follow the rules in front of them rather than just the wills and whims of the people who appoint them. So, I do respectfully disagree with you that it shouldn't, the APC shouldn't be solely beholden to the commissioners and subject to the commissioners' whims.
Okay, you and I have a different opinion on that. I, I, I feel like that the best way to handle this, and it's not according to state laws and state law bans this, would be for that whole board to be elected, just like a school board is elected, back to the people. That, that would be my solution to the, to the whole problem, would be to make that board directly responsible to the people. I don't, I don't know that I would want that board all appointed by us. I don't, I don't, I don't think that would represent citizens of Delphi or Florida or anything like that. I mean, we, we more or less, we represent the whole county, but often our way of looking at things is more from those outside of the appropriated areas, you know, like you, they do that. Because if you live in Delphi, you've got a whole government there that's representing. You don't need the commissioners as much, but except for like Bill Muntz and all the things like that. I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I have a CAFO that is one mile exactly south of me. And it's a fairly new one. It's, it's not any old, you know, old technology one. If the wind is from the south, it's directly south of me. it, I smell it. But when I have it, the worst is when there's no wind. Because it just seems like it just kinda oozes out everywhere. And we have that exact situation you have, that it is very disagreeable to be out in my yard during those times. Now, I'm lucky that any little breeze will blow it in a different direction. So I probably get it not more than, well, you know, as weather changes, you might get it two or three days in a row, might be really heavy. And then you wouldn't have it again for a week or so. And I, if I look back over the last two weeks, I haven't had any problem with it the last two weeks at all. But if there's a time when there's absolutely stale oak in, it's, it's not pleasant to be out in, in, in my yard. And we used to leave the windows open and air out the house and all that through the summertime and springtime, my wife always liked that, but, uh, we're pretty well all air conditioned now, just like you say, just in the house.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, but, so, I'm telling you, I, I understand what you're talking about. On the other hand, we, I mean, I could, I could sit up here and argue both sides of this thing for probably all day, because I've heard it all for so many years on both sides. And I, I know that, uh, one of the ways that, uh, agriculture here has met the challenges of today is to keep their, the next generation on the farm, is you gotta do more than just farming your however many acres, you've gotta add another, uh, source of income. And one of those sources is hog buildings, uh, pork production. And so that has allowed a lot of local farmers to have their kids and their grandkids and all that stay and be part of the family farm. From that standpoint, I think it's, it's great. From the standpoint of what it does to the community, I mean, I live down by Cutler, clear the other end of the county from you. But, uh, there's, I'd say it's a mile and a quarter northwest to Cutler from the hog building I'm talking about. There's times that it's really thick and hard to go into Cutler. There are operators who, that are great ones, that you hardly ever have it overcome from. I mean, they, they do it, they use pit additives, they do stuff like that, and there's not a problem. And there's others that just are not good about being neighbors.
Yeah, there's one, uh, that is, uh, south of, uh, Brockview. And we maybe smelled, I smelled it, you know, like two thousand, since two thousand twelve, maybe once or twice. Pam would say, yeah, once in a while, you'll smell that. But there's something else going on in this other one.
Yeah, there's one I went right by this morning coming here, sits right on County Route four hundred south. Very rarely is there any odor coming out of that building. I mean, I come passive virtually every day, and, uh, sometimes two or three times a day. And you wouldn't know it's there other than it's this big agricultural building. But there's others that I, I mean, I had a guy, not, like you called me up one time, and I've told this story before. Uh, he said, Bill, is there any way you can have commissioner meeting at my house? And I said, well, I don't think so, he was supposed to be getting court house. But anyway, he said, well, I'd just like for you to come out and see what I have against. And he's into his, he has one, it's blowing air right on him, and, uh, he is southwest of this building. Which would make me think that probably most of the time we'd be going the other direction from him, but anyway, he said that, you know, it's so thick he can't be out in the yard, and it's six out of seven days. And that he, uh, he said, you know, when he gets to work, he wears a suit to work. He smells like it, it permeates the whole house, uh. And I went out there and back with him in his yard, and I can say that it, what I saw that day was what he puts up with six out of seven days, he's really, I mean, it is destroyed by this whole project. Uh, and yet I, I know the people that run that hog building, and I, I think they're great people, I don't know why there's such a problem with this one. It comes down just a lot to, to how, how it's managed, how the building is managed. And there are some really good ones out here, and there are some that just don't care enough. I wish the area plan would, well, I don't know, it, just setbacks is not enough because I'm a mile. And how far are you from it?
I think, uh, I, I go over it, and it's approximately like one mile and a quarter.
Yeah.
So in order to, uh, this area plan commission, in order to get their standards better, or changes or anything, that, that's not a, is that a capability of just Carroll County people, or is that a state?
No, it's Carroll, it's Carroll County area plan, they'll meet tomorrow night.
But for changing their standards and their separation and appointments and everything, the appointment, the appointment, uh, part of it, instead of them being elected by the people, is that a state law?
Yes.
That's a state law, so that's gonna be very, uh, difficult to change. Wow, nice setup. I get it. All right, uh, well, to the commission, wow, Pam, Pam and I both hope something can be approved on this. We really appreciate when they're staying about the business aspect and livelihoods. But unfortunately, our, our liberties of, uh, enjoying property and just pretty much the outside gifts that our, uh, holy trinity has granted us on this earth. Uh, we are being negative in impact on that. And, uh, it'd be really interesting to see definitely changes to be done with how this state is set up with its political process.
I, I think you would have trouble finding any, very many anyway, I, I don't know many in the county, people who are anti-farming. I mean, it's a farming community, we don't have anything against farming. Uh, even these buildings are out there and they didn't impact you as they are, I can't imagine anybody would complain at all about them. But, yes.
Um, I do have one question, have you ever talked to a farmer about this?
Oh, I guess, because I don't know who it is, I just, I think I just, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But all's I know is there's no markings of what it is, who it is. The only thing I see on the markings on, on the facility are the hog and slap, uh, logos on the offer of feeders. That's it.
I think, work with Miriam, talk to her, she has, she has the inroads to speak to the agricultural community.
Yes, and, and starting with the farmer, letting the farmer know that they're affecting you and any of the community to, to step up and, and try to correct things for you, I think that's a great place to start, and I'm happy to help you with that.
Yeah, I hope, I hope they do too. I, I mean, I, 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 I hope they do.
They might very well. Uh, I, in my young days, I worked for a long time for my uncle, who was a hog farmer. And this was the old days of having hogs right out in the field and in a hog lot around the house. And, uh, I never could understand how he could really live right in the middle of all that. But to, to him, that was just his livelihood, you know, and, uh, I would be hard pressed to find a better Christian man than he was. He didn't intend to harm anybody else, he just wanted to make a living. And no more than he had, I don't think that he did impact, now a long ways away, but more where he lived right in the middle of it, it was pretty tough.
Uh, everybody had a little too.
Everybody did, yeah.
They had cows, they had chickens.
Yeah.
It's just evolved, farming's just evolved to what it is today. You have two packing plants in the area that's killing thirty-some thousand a day processing. So bringing in this area, finishing out, they're right here, trucking's reasonable. There's not a big margin in that business anymore, so, yeah, that's why the expansion's here.
Thank you.
Yes.
You know, I need to say something to the gentleman. This board does approve the ordinances.
Lisa, you're staging them.
Oh, Lisa Boo.
Lisa, would you mind dropping your mask so I can hear your name too?
I would have preferred everybody one, but, okay.
What's your last name?
My name is Lisa Boo, and I've had this argument since two thousand and sixteen with this particular board, with the exception of Mr. Hulby. Mr. Brown's been here for ten years. Um, they know the ramifications of the facilities. Ms. Roberson represents the ag community, but she has no jurisdiction over anybody holding a license for a CAFO. So for them to sit here and give you fifteen minutes of talk, the reality is, IDEM approves it. Carroll County has known for years they need to change their setbacks and the way these guys operate. And they have failed miserably. So while Bill gave you twenty minutes of lip service, he has done nothing. And there are good operators, the one near me started out horrible, and because I'm his neighbor, he's probably complying with the rules better than ninety-nine percent. You're gonna have flies, you're gonna have stings. It's hydrogen sulfide, there's nothing healthy about them. As far as the newer application, Miriam is correct, it falls underneath the chemist's office. As far as complaints, that is IDEM. So if you want the hotline to IDEM, I'm probably the person. If you want action out of IDEM, because I'm an absolute king of your butt. But you have to be. My doors yesterday were covered with flies. And yes, there are certain times that it's worse, but that guy has known for years and has failed to do anything. They have the science. There's other ramifications to the community, which is typically high meth use, high domestic use, high alcohol use. Tobe has those studies, Bill has those studies, it's denial, and I gotta go work. Yeah.
Okay, because she was talking back, back there, I, I don't know what.
Billy, you know the argument, this is ridiculous.
Okay, uh, EMA Director Mike.
Yes, sir. I'm ready. Sorry, my steam a little anxious, we have a major fire on the. A major. Uh, a residence. Uh, just north of Burnmore.
Thank you.
So sir, you asked me last week to, uh, come back and discuss my grant that, uh,
Dr.
was awarded, so the, the grant that I applied for was the Homeland Security, uh, grant that was, it was, they called it the Homeland Security Grant Priority for two thousand and twenty. Uh, and there was three categories, there was a cybersecurity, hardening soft targets such as, uh, in private places, two include election security. And I can't remember the third off the top of my head. So I talked with Randy, he said we were pretty good with the Barracuda, with the FireEye that we had installed on cyber. So I looked at the soft target for this investment. Uh, mainly because of a lot of our special events, our, uh, some of our credit line structure, the water treatment plans, waste treatment plans and stuff like that, along with the courthouse event. So when I, I started doing some research on it and that, uh, I looked at how we could get the best bank food buy, and some of that was with water filter barriers to act, there's a vehicle barrier. And when I had all the quotes, I forwarded those quotes out to the commissioners and council and to the EMAC board. Asked what they thought of it, uh, the responses that I got, everybody was on board with that. I'll throw a picture, this is not the actual uh, equipment trailer that we're getting, these are a larger style barrier. Um, I went with a smaller barrier because you can add